Shall we go ahead and get started? Welcome, everyone, to the Portola Valley Planning Commission for September 7th, 2021. Shall we start with a roll call?
Commissioner Haskell? Here. Commissioner Taylor?
Present.
Commissioner Targ is not expected this evening. Commissioner Goulden may still be joining us, but he's not present at this time. And the Chair Koffstall.
Yes, I'm here. Great, thanks, Laura. Let's see, so we'll open it up to oral communications from the public. So these are a chance to talk about topics that are not on our agenda, which are a topic at 40 Firethorn Way and conditional use permit at the Alpine Hills. So not those topics right now, but if anyone has other topics, go ahead and raise your hand function and we'll call on you. But I see Rita.
Hi, thank you for taking my comment. I have been asking for the past couple of weeks for minutes for the ad hoc housing element group. And for this group, glad to see that there are several minutes that are being approved right now, tonight, possibly being approved or modified or whatever. But with so much we've got going on in this town concerning housing, and this is where people look for, for that information that happens in the meetings. You know, I don't know if moving forward, I mean, the whatever has been done has been done, and the residents weren't able unless they look at the video or sit down and actually sit through the meeting. It hasn't been, the minutes haven't been available to them. If this could be fixed moving forward, that would be helpful, but it's still hard for the residents when they send the email and not get a response concerning the minutes. I had even sent the meeting message last week, and the person that I sent it to, I won't say their name, but they did not respond and saying, oh, those ones that you see that you're mentioning that are missing will be in next week's packet, or we're gonna pick those. I received no extra response from that person. And if anyone wants to follow up with me on that later, I'd rather not say their name. I gladly send you or forward you the whole correspondence. Thank you.
Thanks, Rita. Let's see, next is the phone number 7562. Is that Caroline?
Good evening. Yes, indeed, it's Caroline Brittongan. Thank you very much for taking my concerns and my comments. This goes back to a set of emails that was actually a follow-up from previous emails in the spring regarding CEQA exemptions. As you know, you approved the Woodside Priory, but under CEQA exemptions, there is a rule, Section 15314, which exempts minor additions within existing, existing school grounds where the additions do not increase the original student capacity by more than 25%. And I don't understand why the planning department submitted the fact stating that 350 was the original. When you go back to 2004, at that time, the CUP was already amended, and the original student capacity was 250. And then I'm very concerned because we had several big projects approved, again, many of them by the planning department, CEQA exempt, but there is a Section 15355 that has to analyze the cumulative impact. And so I don't understand why the town is not considering that. We had the Neely project, we had Woodside Priory, the fire department, Willow Commons, now Sanford, and then the additional housing. And we have accumulative impact regarding fire safety of water utility impact along our scenic corridor, and nobody's addressing it. And my answers, my questions are not being answered. So I was hoping that somebody, I don't know if our town attorney is available to answer those. But at least, you know, we as the public would like to have answers. Thank you.
Thanks, Caroline. Let's see, that's all the public comments I see. Laura, do you have anything to say about either of these? I can't really answer the CEQA thing.
Just briefly, I did email Rita related to the minutes. So maybe she's referring to a different correspondence. It took me about a week to get back to her because I was out of the office on vacation. So maybe she's talking about something else. So Rita, happy to take that offline if you want to check in on that. We are behind on posting planning commission minutes. That's true. So we're working on getting caught up. That's why we've got quite a few minutes in front of you this evening. We changed our method, as you know, of creating the minutes. So we had to work with our transcriptionist to make that adjustment. And then related to the CEQA exemptions, we have provided Caroline extensive documents through a public document request process. And we have let her know that the planning commission approved that project for the Priory with the CEQA exemption. So apparently, she's looking for something other than what we have provided her. But in those materials, you might recall that there is an attachment with a legal interpretation of the CEQA exemption. So that's where we've referred her in the past. So if there's additional follow-up questions, staff can take those outside of the meeting format.
Thank you, Laura. Great. Okay, we'll move on to our topics. The first one is review of a fire, a final map at 40 Firethorn. So hopefully, we have a staff report.
Yes, a very brief one. I'm gonna go ahead and have John, the engineer, join us in the meeting. Just think questions for him. So John, if that went through, you can work. Yeah, here he comes. Okay, so you might recall, planning commissioners, that back in January of 2018, the planning commission approved a tentative parcel map at 40 Firethorn, and that was for a two-lot subdivision. So the applicant was working on some other aspects of the project and then came forward to us to finish the process of finalizing that subdivision action. Subdivisions are two steps, the tentative parcel map and the final parcel map. So when they came forward to us, we had a tremendous amount of turnover with our planning consultants. So we had staff turnover, we had the pandemic, and so there was a delay on the staff's side for processing it. But we've been working with their applicant team to move that forward now. And so these types of subdivisions are quite uncommon for the town. And so there's not as much of a simple procedure that's caught up with the standard practice in, in the planning community on these parcel maps. So we had to work through those details. Most recently, our towns engineering consultant, they're the experts in this. They have reviewed the subdivision map and confirmed that it's consistent with the state law, the Subdivision Map Act, our town code, and our town policies. And our code has this step that's fairly unusual, which is to have the planning commission find it to be consistent with the tentative map, the final map being consistent with the tentative map. This is unusual. This is usually done by just engineers or staff or consultants finding it consistent. But we do require applicants to go through this step. So that's what's before the planning commission this evening. So you have a brief staff report, some background materials with the adopting resolution and the mitigated negative declaration that was adopted with the tentative map. And so staff does recommend approval of the resolution. That's included in attachment three. It just says that you concur with our engineering department that they are consistent, the final map with the tentative map. And the next step is then we go to town council with a separate agreement for their consideration for the improvements. So this is a routine matter, but it doesn't come up very often. So that's all we have from a staff point of view. I'd be happy to try to answer any questions, and the applicant's engineer is here as well, if you have any questions for him.
Great. So in our normal format, we have questions from the commissioners to the staff for presentation, and then we'll take comments from the public and then discuss it among the commissioners. Craig, you want to go first? Do you have any questions?
Sure, I have two. So Laura, I, I saw that the engineer said that they were consistent. But what were the difference? I mean, it was not clear to me what the differences were.
Um, John has his hand up. He's the engineer on the project. I think it would be great to have John to talk about the changes.
Great, that would be helpful. Thank you.
Yeah, John, do you want to go ahead?
Good evening. Can everyone hear me clearly?
Yeah.
Excellent. Thank you, Laura, and the commissioners for your time this evening. I, I think the main point is that there is no change. This was actually an approved tentative map. I don't know the exact year, maybe Laura could come up. But what had happened was, I believe, it expired. So our timeframe to record the map with the county surveyor had survived, had expired. So we're not proposing any changes to the original application nor final map or tentative map. It's actually just kind of a recirculation of the same information because it's required. But yeah, this is completely the same map that we filed, or tentative map that we submitted years ago. And yeah, there are really no actual changes to it. So.
Okay, yeah, great. Yeah, because I just tried to read through the material. It was not clear to me if there was some delta or not. So. Okay, so that's the first question. Then Laura, I think the second question is more to use, like, so it seemed like the EIR and, I mean, all this stuff is approved like in 2017? Looked like in 2018?
2018.
Well, I mean, a little bit of both. I mean, there was some stuff in 2017. Anyway. Is there anything here that would be different today if this was coming before us? I mean, and not in terms of a judgment, but just in terms of the way you would look at this project today versus what got approved? I mean, is it, it just seems like this has been a long time, I guess, is my thing. And I understand it got dragged out for various reasons, but is there anything significantly different in that process versus a process that we might apply today?
Well, I think it's just, it's an interesting thought experiment, right? But we're not authorized to make any changes to what was approved in the tentative map. And so this process was fairly lengthy. They went through ASCC and planning commission approval and the mitigated negative declaration. And so there was a lot of discussion about the specifics of the project at that time. But approval, typically approval of a final map is a ministerial action. It's not usually discretionary. So we're not using any judgment. We're just saying the final map exists. It's consistent with the tentative map, and then we're supposed to approve it. So this step of going, like I said, the step of going to the planning commission is unusual. I'm not familiar with any other cities that do this step.
Right, but then this goes to the council for final approval, right?
Yes.
And in theory, they could say there's other things we want or not?
No, they cannot. They have, they have some authority over the language of the improvement agreement, but they cannot change the final map. The final map has to be approved if it's consistent with the tentative map under state law.
Okay, and is the final map, like, is the EIR considered part of the final map? Is that, I mean, just part of that same package? Is that the way you think, we think about it?
Yes, that's how we think about it.
Okay, great. Thank you. Thanks for the clarification.
You're welcome.
That's everything, Craig?
Yes, thank you.
Great. How about you, Judith? Do you have any questions for the staff or the?
Yeah. Yeah, I'm a little mystified how we can say something's consistent when we don't have the before and the after. Right? So I get the point that the town engineer is telling us nothing has changed. But the only thing, and tell me if I'm thinking about this wrong, that I feel I can certify is that thing that was presented, the one map that I see, unless I missed it somewhere else, is, you know, is the tentative map and is now being approved as the final map. Because otherwise, I'm being asked to certify that something hasn't changed, that I don't have the before and after. So tell me, Laura, if that is a wrong way of thinking about it.
I understand them to be the same. I understand them to be the same map changed from tentative map to final map without any changes. I think the only thing that's changed is the literal language that says, do you know what I mean, changing it to final map? I don't, I don't, I don't believe there's any other changes. So I certainly respect and appreciate your point. But we didn't think that those materials were necessarily, because it was routine and ministerial, we just didn't provide that additional information from you, for you.
Would you get from us what you need if we changed the language in the resolution to say the originally filed tentative map is now the approved final map? So that we're not purporting to say nothing changed when we don't have a way of telling if anything changed?
Um, yes, as long as we word that carefully, right? So we would want to make sure that we can fix anything that's like a typo or like things like the map has to have these signature blocks with certain words on them. And so those things have to change, like the administrative things. But certifying that the tentative map, like the contents of the map itself is, you know what I mean? That that's what you're certifying. Yeah. Did I explain it well enough? Does that make sense? Okay, can I ask John to weigh in as well? Does that approach make sense to you as well?
It does. And just if I'm allowed to share a screen, I could show you the similarities or I guess the exact continuity. So I'm gonna go ahead and share. You could all let me know if you see and hear me clearly. Just a little bit of background before we go any further would be that a, on the left is a preliminary parcel map, right, or a tentative map. And you'll notice in my tab, it's dated 2017, right? So what happens is, in the town, a civil engineer will file a tentative map, which is a map of sorts, but is not recorded with the county or state or anything, right? It gives no constructive notice to the public that these are two parcels, right? It's simply a way for the town to understand what could be. This could be two parcels based on all of this. We think this is good. Town reviews it third party, you know, it meets our criteria. We approve the tentative map. After that, what's on the right of my screen is what's called the parcel map, or more commonly known as a final map. That's prepared by a land surveyor, and this is what goes to the county to be recorded, right? And the carryover here is the lot lines. The, the big driving force here is that this particular mechanic, I believe, of this public hearing is that we're splitting this parcel of land into, or would the commission support that, right? Based on all the evidence supplied. So on the left is the parcel map, tentative map prepared by a civil engineer. My engineer record, Peter Carlino, who I'm representing, by the way. I am licensed myself, but this is, I'm representing Peter on this one. And then on the left would be filed by a land surveyor, in this case Greg Braze of Liam Braze. And this is what goes into the constructive notice for the county, San Mateo County, forever and always. And that's, you know, this is what creates two real property, two fee simple properties. So I hope that helps a little bit in like the definitions of stuff. But the similarities, I mean, obviously, the bearings and distances of the different lot geometries are identical. On the left was what we planned, and on the right is what will be recorded on, in perpetuity, for forever and ever, right?
Okay.
So the way that I think of it is you're changing the format. You're changing the format from what the town approves, and then you're putting it into the legal format that's required for it to be recorded and to physically divide the property legally. And then that creates the record that goes into the future.
Exactly. So what's on the left is for town of Portola Valley staff, planning staff, to evaluate and agree with. What's on the right fulfills the subdivision map act and allows this to become two separate parcels.
So the one on the right is dated this summer, essentially, right? It is not the tentative map, right?
It is not.
Okay.
This is the final map. Yeah.
On the left, where is it shown? Where's the subdivision line? Is it that angled piece right there? Yep.
Yeah, it's, it's this, sorry, I know it gets small on Zoom sometimes, but it's this common lot line. And these are setbacks, these dashed lines. So let's see. Go ahead and do a little hot. That's your common property line, which, if you fiddle through the bearings and distances, you know, you will find that same line is right here. So no setbacks on a parcel map because it's just real property, right? So we're not talking about where to put a building or how to do grading or where to build a wall or where to plum your utilities. That's all tentative map on the left. Final map on the right is purely land division, fee simple property. It makes it two lots, but you, you will see on the right easements, right? So here's a sewer easement for the benefit of parcel A, meaning parcel A sewer line passes through parcel B, connects to the Los Trancos main. And that's how that, you know, provides wastewater outflow for parcel A.
Okay.
So these dash lines are easements. Yeah.
Did we have the one on the left in our packet?
No, you didn't. I think you probably should have. Based on your line of questioning and interest. Yeah, you should have.
Yeah. Okay, but we can deem this to be in the official packet? Like legally, I want to make sure it's reflected that we had this, and that's the basis that we're deciding, not on seeing one map. I just want to make sure we're doing things the right way because this is, you know, hopefully done once the town council looks at it, right?
Yeah, we can, what we could do is reflect in the resolution that the applicant share the tentative map and the final map as part of the presentation at the meeting. And so then it's, it's in the record. And so what you're really, when we say that word consistency, what we're really looking for is just those two resultant parcels are the ones that we expected to see. And then the other aspects of it are the very technical and legal things that are required to file the map with the county.
Okay, that, thank you. That was helpful for me. I'll hand it back to Ann and see if she has anything.
Great. I do not have any further questions. Let's see, so now we will open it up to the public. If anyone has a question or comment on this agenda item, we'd be happy to take those now.
And John, if you could go ahead and stop sharing your screen.
Thank you. I was wondering if this is good or bad to show. Okay.
Yeah, I think that's a good time for now. Okay.
Okay, if anybody has of the attendees, whom there are nine, have questions, raise your hand on the Zoom feature. I don't see any, so I'll bring it back to the commission for discussion. I'll start with you, Craig. Any?
No, I think I got my questions answered. I'm, I'm, I'm good moving forward with this.
How about you, Judith?
Yeah, I would want it reflected, as Laura recently described, that it was presented during the meeting and that that's what we're saying is consistent. So with that caveat and the right language that gets Laura what she needs, I'm comfortable.
Sounds good, and I feel the same way. I'm fine.
Okay, then what I would recommend is in the resolution, there is a whereas that the town staff has reviewed the proposed final map. Then we should add another whereas after that. Whereas the planning commission viewed the tentative map and the final map as part of the presentation on, as part of the applicant presentation on September 7th at the meeting. And then that will reflect into the record. If anyone needed to look at it, they could go back to the Zoom meeting to see it.
That sounds good. Good, and I guess we, so we're ready for a motion. Is that right? To approve this resolution as written on red page 48 with the additional whereas that you just gave us, Laura?
That's my recommendation, yes.
Craig or Judith, do you want to make a motion?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve the resolution of the planning commission certifying conformance of the final parcel map with the tentative parcel map for 40 Firethorn.
As amended by Laura.
As amended by Laura.
Okay, great.
I second that.
Sounds good, Craig. Let's see, we like to do roll call votes for this. Is that right, Laura?
Please.
There was no more discussion after the motion, right? I don't think so.
Okay, Commissioner Haskell?
Aye.
Commissioner Taylor?
Aye.
Chair Koffstall?
Aye.
Um, thank you, John, for joining us. That was appreciated. Feel free to jump off the meeting now as we continue.
Appreciate you. Thank you. Bye.
Great. Thanks, John. Thanks, Laura. Great, so we'll go on. Oh, Laura, I've texted John Goulden during this last bit. Ooh, was that allowed? I think so. It's just bureaucratic.
Related to his attendance. It's a landing. That's all I talked about.
And he's not coming tonight, so why don't we keep the agenda as published? And do the, the second item now regarding the CUP for Alpine Hills Tennis and Swimming Club.
Great. So I'll hand it over to Suzanne to give the staff report.
Okay, good evening, commissioners.
We've still, Suzanne, we've still got a really cool picture of a bear.
Oh, you're not seeing?
We go. No, we've got it now.
Okay, good. I guess it was a delayed reaction.
Yeah, delayed.
So good evening, commissioners. You may recall having reviewed this application in June at a special meeting. And at that time, there were a few questions and comments primarily around special events and, you know, some specifics about the numbers of people involved with what was being proposed with 50 additional memberships, which is really the only amendment to the use permit that's being proposed here. So beyond the staff report, if you have any questions for staff, I'm available. The applicant is also available. I have the general manager. There's actually a second person from Alpine Hills available tonight. And then if we have any questions for the applicant, we did not have any public comments at the time the staff report was prepared. However, we received four different comments, which were hopefully provided to you today as a supplemental. Two of those were from individuals supporting the application. And one resident has some, was not in support. And then there was also some comments from a resident on Creek Park that you've heard from previously, just again re-reading her request for a sign regarding parking on her street. And then, you know, beyond the public comments, planning commission discussion, and hopefully a decision this evening. So this is an amendment to the existing use permit for Alpine Hills Tennis and Swimming Club. The club is asking to increase the memberships by 50 from 700 to 750. There are no other changes proposed. All of the existing facilities, parking, et cetera, will stay exactly as it exists today. This project is categorically exempt from CEQA, and so I've cited those two sections for you. And as you may recall, there was a traffic and parking study that was completed by Hexagon Consultants. And the ultimate determination was that with the additional memberships, we would not see a significant change in Uh, a significant change in the demand for parking or, and there weren't any safety or. Uh, queuing issues at the driveways or, uh, on, on Alpine or Los Trancos. Um, here's the site overall, just an aerial view for you and, um, again, everything's staying exactly as it exists at this time. And here's the site plan. I'm, uh, primarily showing this is to show where the parking's located. Um, and then there also is, uh, so auxiliary parking or overflow parking. So if there's a special event or a swim. Or something going on where there's, uh, higher. Parking, there's a whole bunch of overflow parking. So ultimately, there's a hundred and seventy-eight spaces, which again has been determined to be appropriate for. Uh, continued operation of the club with the additional members. So here's the two entrances on Alpine. And, uh, here's the Los Trancos entrance exit. Those will stay exactly as they are today. Um, upper parking area. Uh. So I'd like to get into some of the conditions of approval. Uh, there's a lot of conditions already in place. Uh, for the athletic club that were put in place in twenty seventeen when they did the, uh, major overhaul, rebuilt the clubhouse. Uh, did some expansion and, um, at that time, uh, there was a, a whole bunch of conditions put in place. And I think that for the most part, they're all still adequate. Uh, a few of them, uh, were recommending amendments to. Uh, this first one would need to be amended to accommodate the new memberships to allow seven fifty as opposed to seven hundred. And then we've just put them in the two categories. Um, the total membership of twenty-seven hundred is something that's already in place. And, uh, based on, uh, consideration of the number of members that are there now and the average per membership. Uh, we determined that that number does not need to be increased. So. They'll stay underneath the twenty-seven hundred persons maximum, uh, total club membership. Uh, so that number can just stay as is. Uh, there's a requirement for an annual report. I just wanted to bring this to your attention so that, uh, the commission knows that. The club is giving us a report annually and we're not recommending any changes to this condition. I just wanted you to be aware of it. Um, that they, they will be continuing this, uh, requirement and, um. You know, we will, the commission always has the opportunity to review something if there a problem develops that isn't currently there. Uh, events, this is, uh. The condition in place for special events. So there are caps on the number of events, the number of people that can attend. No changes are proposed to this condition, uh, by the applicant and the staff does not have any recommended changes. So they can have four major, uh, uh, for, uh, special events a year and in addition to their swim meets. And then they're capped at two hundred and fifty people. Uh, this is a second condition around parking for, um, special events. And I, and I did recommend some changes to this one, mostly because it was, uh, previously a requirement. And it's supposed to be Creek Park Drive. Uh, that's incorrect right there. It's Creek Park Drive, not Creek Side, and I will make sure it's correct. Uh, uh, elsewhere. Basically, the, at the time this condition was adopted, there was a requirement to put this traffic and parking management plan into place. That is now in place. So I felt it was appropriate to modify that language. And then also I just wanted to add that. Um. You know, they just need to keep monitoring, making sure that, uh, we don't run into some, any issues with neighboring properties, roadways. Uh, as a result of events. And I think the club has, uh, tried very hard to be a good neighbor and we did hear that from a couple of, uh. People in their special comments or their, their public comments. And so, uh, again, I just noted what those, the public comments that were received since. Uh, the last meeting in June, uh, that we did receive, uh, one comment during the preliminary view process. And that was regarding the parking on Creek Park Drive, uh, or requesting no parking sign on Creek Park Drive. And then, uh, that was reiterated again with a new comment for this meeting. Um, and again, two members, uh, two residents in the area supported, supported the application and one, uh, opposed to the membership increase. Even though they're already a member of the club, which I thought was an interesting, uh, caveat. Um, and, um, other than that, next steps are, uh, you know, the, if the commission sees. It's appropriate to approve the use permit, the club would then. Add twenty-five members immediately, what, just as soon as the public, uh. The appeal period ends and then in twenty twenty-three, they would add twenty-five more. Uh, so no permits are needed because they're not proposing any kind of changes to the facilities or anything on the premises. And so staff is recommending the commission, uh, consider the staff report, any public comments, uh, that might come up this evening. In addition to what you've already received. And then following your discussion, uh, make the required findings for approval of a use permit amendment. And, um, to allow the, um, the, uh, requested membership increase, uh, and then we have provided. Recommended conditions of approval, basically just modifications to some of the existing or carrying forward all of the previous conditions with just a few minor. Changes that I already went through in this, uh, earlier in the presentation. Um, and that is attached to a resolution. So that was your first attachment to the staff report, the resolution with the conditions as an attachment to that document. And other than that, I don't have anything to add. I do have the findings all on slides. If you want to discuss any of those specifically, um, and I'm available if you have any questions.
Thank you Suzanne. Let's see, paranormal process. We'll bring it to the commissioners for clarifying questions. So how about if I start with Judith this time? Oh, do you mind Suzanne taking away your slide share for a moment?
I'm probably gonna ask her for, for something, but that's.
Okay, for now, actually me too. So maybe take, keep your slides up there. Sorry.
Okay, just in case.
Um. On the annual reporting, I know the prior year has to submit an annual report and we look at that and. I have an opportunity to ask questions. Have we seen the annual report for the, uh, club here? I don't recall doing so.
Um, I don't know. Perhaps Laura would, would know if that's, I think they're just required, this says, uh, they're required to submit it. Um. Yeah, it does say provided annually to the planning commission. So if that hasn't been done, I guess we need to change that practice and start. Forwarding that information to the planning commission, uh, as an informational item. And then if the commission has any questions or concerns. You know, we could discuss that.
Yeah, our, um, staff's intention is to set a regular calendar where certain CUPs come forward at different times of the year. Um, on a regular schedule. So that's something that we'll be implementing now that we have more CUPs that need more active monitoring than in the past.
I, I think it's good practice because we can actually give people an opportunity to see how things are going and. With a notice meeting, the, the community would have the opportunity to at least weigh in if something's arrived. So I would, uh, and we can talk about that later. On the parking. It seems like we are getting some offsite parking. And what I was gonna ask you to project Suzanne was where Creek. Side or whatever it's called.
Uh, Creek Park.
Yeah, where is it relative to the club?
Um, I'm not sure if it shows on here. This is, I don't think it does. I think it's further out. Um, I believe the residents on, the resident, my understanding is the residents on Creek Park are not only. Uh, they, they do sometimes get parking on their street and it, it's not necessarily the club. It, 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 it's, it's three different uses. One is, uh, the Alpine Inn and, um, there. There's a couple of, a couple, they, the, the resident on that road cited a couple of different, uh, uses that sometimes park on the street. And, um, you know, the point, the point being that, uh, club members and people are going there aren't supposed to park on their road.
And it, it must be the one that's just north of the club that dips down.
Yes.
Yeah, it runs a parallel Alpine Road. It's between the club and the soccer field.
Okay.
It's, yeah, it's a little, it's not a very long street. There's what, four or five houses on it.
Right, right.
Okay, um, so we don't know, it sounds like we don't know if the parking that their troubles they're experiencing. Are largely or minimally due to the club, right? We don't know who those.
Um, I can, uh, let me take a quick look at the, the, the letter that we received and, cause she cited three different, uh. Three different things here, so.
You want us to pull up a map to look at? Is that helpful, a Google map or?
I, I know now what road this is, so I don't need it, but if others feel the need.
And it is very close to the club. I mean, it's much farther away from Alpine Inn and the.
Yeah.
Soccer.
Okay.
Much farther is a relative term, but it, it is close. It's, um, it's that little neighborhood. It's right between the club and the soccer field there next to Alpine Inn.
Yeah, but I don't think we should use distance. It's impossible to park for the soccer field if you try to go. The Alpine Inn parking, right? I can see, I feel like there's, um. Uh, pressure to park on Creek Side from. The soccer field and Alpine Inn because that parking is so jammed up, whereas probably a lot less. Uh, desire from people to park there for, um, Alpine Hills, cause.
Right, no, those are the three sources that the resident cited was that was, uh, Alpine Hills, uh, the soccer field and Alpine Inn. Yeah, and so it was those three. So I don't know if they necessarily know which ones that are, are parking there. It does make more sense that it would be. People going to locations closer to that street, but.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm. Right, because what I'm trying to figure out is how much of a parking issue there is because they are. You know, ten spaces under, um, the capacity, right? If, if. Their projections on three point one seven or whatever it was, number of cars per member. Um, there's not, doesn't, didn't seem to be a lot of room there.
Yeah.
Right.
I know, yeah, we don't want to lose any parking at the, uh, athletic club.
Oh, absolutely not.
But they are, but they are going to retain all of it. It's nothing's changing with it, so. Um, and then there is a condition in there, um, requiring them to maintain those one hundred and twenty-four uncovered spaces. So. Those can't go away. That's part of the use.
My point is, I remember approving a lot of parking spaces there in the front and in the back. The question is with the new numbers, new members, and they're gonna be households. Are we getting up to the point where? If those projections are a little off on cars per, how, per membership. Are we creating an additional problem? That, that's what I'm trying to figure out and I'm not sure we have the answer to that, but.
Judith, that's, yeah, Judith, that's a good question. And we're doing a lot now to mitigate parking as it is, as it currently stands. By asking people to walk, ride their bikes, to take rideshare just for safety issues. And we're seeing some pretty positive impacts. Can we quantify that? No, not really, but we are making efforts to, to address that.
Okay. Um. Maybe I can ask you, um, they, the neighbor reporting in said when there's an event, there's. People looking at the parking and who's parking, but when there's no event, things happen. Um, and what is your approach for having whatever parking attendance there is? Is it mainly for the big events? Four times?
It is. We have staff, we have qualified people on staff and then for, uh, the, like, one or two really large events. We hire, uh, valet parking and parking lot attendance, uh, to manage the parking lots for us. And that's the next, that's a pretty significant expense of a couple of thousand dollars per event.
Yeah.
We are completely willing to make those commitments.
Yeah.
And continue making those commitments.
Okay, and my last question is the actual changes there. The slides that you projected up Suzanne, I don't recall the one about the parking. Um, the red line being in here, um. And I just want to make sure that the, the changes that you projected up are the only changes in the entire CUP that we need to be aware of.
Yes, uh, uh, all the changes that were, the staff is recommending. Uh, I thought I put them all in the staff report and then they're. In the new set of, they're, they're modified in the new set of conditions. So the one on, um.
Okay.
Vent parking is this one. So we basically just want to keep, keep the, the requirement for the traffic and parking management plan in place. Um, and just, uh, you know, I just added that. And, and the club's well aware of this. And obviously, as, uh, you know, Mr. Walker already mentioned, they're, they're trying to. You know, they, they get assistance in there when they're having a big event to get people parked in there as efficiently as possible and.
Mm-hmm.
Trying to be, you know, encouraging members to carpool and those type of things and use other types of transportation.
Mm-hmm. No, I, I, all I'm trying to do is make sure that. I mean, in the future, I would prefer to have a red line of the whole thing so I can look at it and just say, oh, there's only four changes. Um, but for today's purpose, what you've projected up, you're just giving me the verbal assurance that that's it. Those are the only changes that.
Right.
Were red. And that's all I'm, thank you.
Yeah, and of course, it's the commissioners feel like you want to add a condition. Or if you'd like to augment any of the conditions, that's absolutely fine. That's, that's your prerogative and you, you, you may do so. So if you feel like something's not covered, we can, we can either amend a condition or add a condition as necessary.
Thank you.
Great, thanks Judith. How about you Craig? Do you have any clarifying questions?
Um, I think Judith hit most of them, um. I, I'd certainly like to make sure that the CUP review process does get formalized because I, I do think it's the public's. Chance for input. Um, I'm having a little bit of a hard time reconciling. There were two letters that basically, um, discussed parking issues. Um, one was on Golden Oak, um, and the other was on Creek Park. Um, and so I'm trying to, how do I reconcile that against a traffic consultant's report that says there's plenty of, of. Parking and there's, you know, no issue. I mean, ob- obviously somehow people are parking there and I'm trying to figure out how we're gonna. Help manage that process.
Yeah, there's a human nature aspect of this, that the traffic consultants are not always going to be able to. Um, pinpoint, right? So they're looking at assumptions that are typical in their profession. But in real life, sometimes people just like to park where they like to park. And we know that, right? And we wanted to discourage them from parking on public roads that impact other people. But it's a balance because people can park on public roads, do you know what I mean? As long as it's, um, safe and appropriate parking. But, um, the way that that's commonly done these days is through the parking management plan. And by the club really taking it, you know, steps forward, continuing to do the things that they're doing. So it's not just encouraging people to, um. To carpool or to bike or to walk, but it's also giving active instruction about where to park and where not to park and reminding people. Um, about their neighbors. And so that might be something that the planning commission may wish to consider augmenting. That condition of approval related to the parking management plan. To just be more explicit about what your expectations would be about what they include in their parking management plan. Um, as they're going forward. So we, we hear that they're willing to do those things. Um, and so we could, um. We could encourage that through a stronger condition. And then they would have to report on that. Um, with their annual reports. And then if the public is experiencing something, there's a clear connection between their parking management plan. And what the, um, residents' experiences are.
Okay, yeah, we could have more of this during the discussion. Thank you.
Oh, great, great. Um, could I see, um, Suzanne, could you put up the, um, you had a slide that talked about the events, the large events?
There's, there's two different ones. One is more specific to parking and there's this one. Which governs how many people and the ma- and the number of events.
I'm still seeing the bear.
Oh, okay, let's see. Sorry about that. That's my screensaver.
That's good.
Okay. So here's the condition about, about the special events, the number they can have, the maximum is two fifty. Uh, for events other than swim meets.
So I didn't understand, or I just want to know what the math is on the swim meets. Um, they, they'll limit large events except, could they have thirty swim meets a year that are any number? How do you read?
Um, it says that not including swim meets, which typically number no more than three during the summer season. Uh, so. You know, the, it doesn't say you can't have more than three, but. Um, and perhaps again, the, the club representatives can comment on this. I don't know, is it typical to have more than three swim meets in a year? Or in the summer?
Guys, you're muted. Garth.
Uh, thi- this year, we only had two swim meets this summer.
I see. And like, how many people come to a swim meet? Is that way larger than these? Events that we're talking about on this sheet, like the two fifty?
They're in that two fifty, three hundred range. It's, it's a moving thing because lots of, I mean, parents will show up, watch their kids swim. As soon as their kid's events done, they leave. So it's, it's a, it's a rotating in and out kind of atmosphere. So it's hard to track exactly, but we haven't had any issues with parking, which sounds. We haven't had any issues with parking, which sounds may, and we we managed in the parking during this process.
I see, you have not had issues, so you give them enough instructions that they. I mean, I'm just imagining it's way harder to control events where people just flood in from somewhere else and then like, oh, here's a spot, let me park there. Versus events that are mostly your members where you can send an email and say, okay, here's how you park.
It will be do, we do notify the teams at a time about parking. You know, if you get twenty-five or thirty percent of those two parents to read the information at a time, that's probably pretty good. Uh, but we do make efforts to ma- make sure they're aware. We also have a parking lot attendance. We have our maintenance staff. Uh, that are trained in how to manage parking lots, uh, watch the parking lots in those swim event mornings.
And the way this is written where it says, um, I'm looking down on like line. Three and four, not including the swim meets, which typically number no more than three during the summer season. If there were a new manager, not you. Um, could somebody decide no swimming is just the greatest thing on earth and make that ten, or this, this is sort of legally says. No more than three.
Well, there, there is a some institutional knowledge of the club, and I've been here a year now, over a year, and this was one of the first things that I was. You know, informed about, we need to keep track of this information and keep track of these type of events, so that institutional knowledge seems to be. Passably, it was passed along to me. Now, on the other question. That this, this, we're part of a swim league, so the swim league divides up the meets. And it, you know, no, no club gets more than three a year, usually about two a summer season. Uh, so the chances of us getting more than three are very minimal. The chances of us getting. Eight, nine, ten, it's almost impossible cuz there's only eight clubs, I think, uh, in the whole league.
Yeah, and I get.
Oh, good. Yeah, technically, um, I would say that this is not, the way it's worded is not a maximum, it's guidance.
Yeah.
For the, for the number of swim meets.
Yeah, that's what it seems like to me, and um.
Yes, and you, yeah, you could change that condition.
I guess I'm debating.
Be more specific.
Well, it's, it's only a problem when it becomes a problem, and it doesn't seem to be a problem, at least in my time here. Um. So, you know, if if it's something we need to go back and address, we're certainly happy to do so. Uh, I'd, I'd like to see us be able to move forward, so it in the name of efficiency, if it helps to leave it the way it is and we keep monitoring, and that's great. Uh, but we're certainly, you know, the discretion of the commission on what, what makes you feel comfortable with moving this forward.
Yeah, okay. Um, and then, um, one of the neighbors was worried about the hours for parties. What are the hours, I guess, for parties in the main building and also for parties in the um Roadhouse Building?
They cut off at ten o'clock.
They do, okay. Both, both locations?
Yes.
Oh, okay, yeah.
Now, there may be some trickle over as people exit, but they, they, every, every client's notified it. Your parties are attend.
Okay, okay. Okay, good. That's all my questions right now. Let's see, so let's open it up to public comments now. Let's see, our first one I see is David Cardinal.
Uh, just a second while Suzanne stops sharing and will.
Okay.
Good.
So where is the? I guess I have to get it on the, sorry, I gotta get on the Zoom platform here. Where is it?
I got it. Okay, so going to David Cardinal.
Yes.
Great, thank you. I think I recognize that bear. It seems like from Silver Salmon Creek. Awesome. I, I wanna go up level. I was the president from, of Alpine Hills from two thousand four to two thousand seven. And the person who spent a lot of time with the town, our town, um, getting the membership increased from six hundred to seven hundred. And the biggest reason I fought for that was that, um. We were trying to do an expensive at the time remodel, and we didn't want to keep our. Long-term, if you will, senior citizens out. So we added a category of senior memberships, which the town was very supportive of. There was gonna be fifty when we went from six hundred to six fifty, and a hundred when we went from six hundred to seven hundred. I think in the succeeding years, that has been in almost entirely. Forgotten or thrown aside in a quest to. Generate maximal revenue for the club, which. Our club, I'm a member, I love it. Um, so before anybody thinks of going higher. I would love to see that revisited and the, our club. Um, have its feet maybe held to the fire and say. What are you doing about making sure people who've supported the club for fifty years? Can still be members when the membership now is. I don't know, it's like. Forty thousand or, I mean, so this wasn't what we. Asked for when we went from six hundred to seven hundred. And I hope it's not something that is forgotten in the quest to add yet more. People who can pay whatever they want to pay. Uh, we're life-formal members, we'll stay there, but so many people that we value are. In the club because they can afford to be in it, and so I'd, I'd like to pay some attention to that. Thank you.
Thanks, David, and we'll do our usual process where we uh listen to all the uh public comments and then um address them all at the end. Uh, next, um, let's see, I'm not sure how to parse this name, but it starts with Philip.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, that's great.
Hi, my name's Phil Chanfiki.
Okay.
I, uh, I own the property at four one one five Alpine Road. Um, that is directly uh adjacent to the club, right behind it actually. Um, I don't have an issue with the club membership increasing. As a matter of fact, I've never had an issue with parking or swim meet problems. Uh, parking on Creek Park is an issue maybe three or four times a year, but almost never. My issue comes to the fact that two years ago, when we did the remodel at Alpine Hills. They allowed trucks to come to my back fence. There is nowhere in Portola Valley will trucks come anywhere close to a property as they come to mine. At the time, trucks were only allowed to be there certain hours of the day, between eight and five. Uh, they presented no more than three or four trucks a day. As we've gone on for these two years, that number of trucks has increased to eight to ten per day. And the hours, there's nobody monitoring when these trucks show up and when they don't. And by the way, uh, the last manager who was there, Eric Quaid, was doing an excellent job. He turned away every truck that showed up early. He didn't take any. Deliveries early, he sent the trucks away. That has gone away. Uh, trucks are now delivering in the morning. Um, I made contact with the new manager, who I know is on this line today. That initial contact became very adversarial. I'm disappointed in that because I love the club and I'm not. Trying to have an adversarial relationship with the club. But the backup noises, which was the presentation for the sound. Uh, for trucks coming in is only one issue with the trucks. They are so close to my house that that diesel engine goes straight through the house. And by the way, the air brakes are twice as loud as the backup sounds. And as the truck sits there upon delivery, and the truck sizes have increased over the year, the air brakes shoot out. Every five minutes. So if the truck's there for a half hour, I'm hearing. Through my house, nonstop. Now, increasing the membership probably will bring more trucks to the back of my house. I'm asking the membership committee to revisit the situation and to put trucks back on Alpine Road. Or on Lost Trancos, which are the main roads that were delivery back in the day. Now, I bought my house sixteen years ago, and when I bought it, I knew I bought a house behind a club. I have no problem with the club. I love the club. I throw all my basketballs back over the fence that come over the fence. Uh, most of my friends are members of the club. I'm, I'm a piece of the community. But the trucks have become a major problem for myself and I'm sure for others in the, in my area. Having them go back to a main road would alleviate this problem, and I have no problem with an increase in membership. The problem I have is. The community that I live in is the one that's under fire for the noise that's brought in by the trucks. Now, when they presented this whole proposal in the beginning, they didn't want. The deliveries going through the clubhouse where their members were at, and I'm good with that. But we have delivery people coming into the club. There's no reason why they can't hand truck that stuff in from a main road. And deliver it to the back of Alpine Hills. At this point in time, the trucks are literally making that turnaround, and they can put the map back up there for you. No more than twenty yards from my back fence. The sounds go straight through my house, and when they show up at six thirty, six forty-five AM in the morning. My mother-in-law and my wife are still sleeping. I unfortunately am up cuz I'm working, but that is a problem for me. And I would like to see if we can find a resolution to that problem. I appreciate you taking my comments and allowing for the open format. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Philip. And let's see, next is Caroline Vertonghen.
Great, thank you very much. Um, yes, I hope you will hear all the concerns of the residents. Uh, we became a member as well, um, and I remember many years, uh, we. We have seen an overflow of parking, especially when there's swim meets. I am concerned, uh, that the proposal of the traffic study, oh, based on the traffic study. Um, again, uh, Hexagon took the data from November second and November seventh. That does not represent the reality, and so. Many times we go to the club, there's no parking. I don't know if they just estimate that. Uh, one family is two people and that they always. They're, uh, carpool to the club, uh, i- in our active lives, that doesn't happen. And so I really hope that the committee will look at the, you know, the real numbers and the impact. Yes, we have a, an, a parking issue and, and we love, uh, Rosati, so Alpine Inn. We love the project, so we're not going to shut that down, but, but there is a parking problem. There's a parking problem for players at Rosati, the soccer field. Um, and yes, there is a park, a parking problem at Creekside. Many people go there because there is no parking, and I hope that, um, the commission will ask. To work with real members and really demand that the planning department, because. We've seen it over and over. They promised that there would be oversights, and we have not seen that. Wuthai Priory was supposed to give their annual report in June. We haven't seen it, and when we ask, we don't get it. So it's the same thing here. So, thank you very much, and I hope you will, uh. Uh, listen to the residents. Thank you. This is a community. It's a wonderful community, um, and we'd like to keep it that way. Thank you.
Thanks, Caroline. Okay, any more public comments? I don't see any hands up. Okay, great. I guess, um, how about if we let, um, Laura and Garth respond to any of those, uh, if they'd like? Or have in, input?
I would, I would just say, um, in regards to the neighbor talking about the truck. Um, route information, I'm not familiar with that history. The addition to the club was. Um, the new clubhouse was approved before I got here. Um, I would imagine that there was detailed conversation about that at that time. But unfortunately, I just don't have that project history to be able to offer the commission, um, at the meeting tonight. So depending on how your discussion goes, um, I could give any other feedback or suggestion, but I just don't have that data.
And, and we do monitor trucks. Uh, anytime a truck is, is there before eight AM, we either send them away or notify the, their, uh, delivery department. To not allow trucks before eight AM. Uh, so we are very diligent about that, and, and Phil, I'm sorry to hear that. You know, you think we have an adversarial relationship because I thought you and I were getting along well. Um, but it, we do monitor it very closely. So i- it is something that we're all aware of, and we do turn trucks away, and we do notify them about the times that deliveries are allowed.
And then what Caroline brought up, um, that sometimes she goes to the club and there's no parking, that does seem inconsistent with the. Parking spot numbers and the, um. Data we saw before from the parking numbers.
I don't have any. Additional comments in that. And then, then as far as Mr. Cardinals' comments, um, that, that's something that's at the club level. That we would, we've actually had these discussions with the membership committee. Uh, we're looking to increase the membership seven percent, uh, is what the math is. And we're also looking to increase the senior category by seven percent as well. So that's, his comments are valid, and they're actually being addressed within the rules and regulations.
Great, so I'll bring it back to the commission then for discussion now. Judith, do you want to go first? Sure, um. I do want to see an annual report scheduled. I already said that. I, I think that's important, particularly because there's these. Differing views of whether or not there are issues around parking. Um, I remain concerned that we're. Right up close to them needing to use the full capacity of parking there. Um, I don't want to attribute all of the problem to the club because we don't know. Where those, uh, parking issues are coming from. I'm certainly hearing that some people don't have parking when they turn up. I'm sure on occasion that's going to happen, but is it a consistent enough? Issue that we need a special plan for it, um. I probably should have asked earlier, but why fifty? Why not forty? Why not, you know, other? Um, and maybe the applicant can answer that after I make, make my other comments. Um. I, I am concerned, I was on the original twenty seventeen. Planning commission that approved this. I do remember concerns expressed at that point about the truck deliveries. Um, so that, that does sound familiar to me, um. And I don't know what, how to resolve the discrepancy between. You know, one report and the other about whether or not there are noise issues and diesel issues. Particularly before eight AM. Um, it sounds like there's work to be done there to figure that out. Even if you have a policy, is it being followed enough? Uh, and. What, what are the alternate procedures? Um, I, I do think increasing is only gonna make it a little bit worse. So I am, I am concerned about that piece of it. And we generally have a parking issue in that condensed area. Um, we'd be adding to it, but it, it is an issue for the town as far as the zots and the. Soccer field and maybe or maybe not the club contributing to that. I don't have the. The information to know how much of that is due to the club, and I'm wondering, is there a way to? Look at that cumulative parking issue along Alpine and understand it better. Um, I know it's tough to get parking, um, outside of the club. You've got your spaces. But what is contributing? Is it the club? Is it mainly other things and? And, and what can be done? Because these get to be burdens. When there's large events, in particular, at either any of those locations. And, um, zots events seem to go on all the time, so, um, it's good to see people enjoying it, but. Um, the parking, um, is only gonna increase as an issue if more usage is in that area. Um, it sounds to me like the, the club is a great. Community facility. It was in twenty seventeen when we looked at your, your upgrade proposals. It's fleshed out well, um, it seems to be going well, so, um, you know, kudos to the club for. Managing through that, that transitional time and getting to the place it is. I just don't wanna. Um, I, I do want to see some precautions built in. Um, or additional studies planned to, to make sure that we're not blindly making of. a slight problem worse or a moderate problem bad. And that, that's, I'll let my commissioners comment here on whether or not they, they see the same issues and if they have ideas for how to approach them.
Thanks, Judith. Craig?
Yeah, so I, I agree with much of what Judith said. I mean, I think the club is a great resource for the town. So, you know, thank you and thank you for being, you know, kind of good neighbors. These hearings are always tough because, you know, the worst always comes out. So, so don't, don't think we don't appreciate that there's a good side of the club. It's not, it's not all bad. So I am hearing sort of two major things of concern for me. One is this, we'll call it overflow parking, again, hard to potentially know where it's coming from. It's been sort of my anecdotal experience when I come to the club, that there are not a lot of parking places in that sort of front parking area. You know, if you roll in there to meet somebody for lunch, you know, you feel good when you find, you know, one parking place and maybe there's one more left. So it does feel kind of tight. And I'm not sure how people know to go to the back when it gets too full rather than going over to Creek Park or going over to Golden Oak. So I guess, you know, one question for you, Garth, is I mean, what could we do to sort of manage this better? I mean, and I'm not trying to put all this on you, but you know, as a person closest to this issue, I'm wondering if you have some ideas on how we might manage this? And you're muted, by the way.
Is it okay to respond?
Yeah, please, yeah, yeah.
Okay, yeah, I wasn't sure what the protocol was.
Yeah, yeah, no, thank you.
And you're right, the front parking lot obviously fills up first because that's the front entrance to the club. The back parking lot, not so much. For bigger events, we have temporary signs we put out directing traffic and guests and members to the back parking lot that says, please go to Los Trancos and turn left and enter the back parking lot. So we put those in and out on the busy days when we have big events. So we do manage that along with the parking lot attendance as well.
So I guess what I was asking is, I mean, for a moment, you know, let's assume that these aren't the big events that you're, that you're managing. Because again, like you said, I mean, it sounds like you hire people at considerable expense to manage this and I appreciate that. I'm wondering, you know, what do we do about the sort of more day-to-day stuff? Where maybe some of it's human nature, but maybe some of it, some of those big signs that you're putting up, maybe we could put up slightly smaller signs that direct people to, you know, come around the loop and now go around and park in Los, in Los Trancos. I mean, I don't know if it would help and that's, I was sort of looking to ask you.
We're certainly willing to do that. I border, I think Anne brought this up at the June meeting, that too many signs become sight pollution and too many signs also become, people become blind to them. So I'm not a big fan of a lot of signs, but we certainly, if this is something that'll help us move this forward, we're more than willing to do that if that's what the commission wants us to do. We're, we're open to those ideas and we're willing to do them. Bottom line, you know, the traffic study provides black and white numbers on a snapshot of a time period. And that's how these decisions are based on those snapshots. And we're within the, the traffic analysis on this. So we can do a better job managing the day-to-day and if that's something the commission wants us to address, we're happy to do so.
Yeah, I guess I, what I want to be careful is I would like not to be too prescriptive with you. But I'm
That'd be appreciated.
Yeah, yeah, for sure. But I'm a dude that, you know, I think we should be reviewing the CUP once a year. And I would say that if from the residents, we continue to get active parking complaints, then a year from now, when we review the CUP, then I think we would be more prescriptive. So, so I mean, that's what I'm hoping is that you guys will keep an eye out
Absolutely.
and then keep experimenting. And if the problem goes away, the neighbors will be happy, you'll be happy and we won't have to get involved. So, so I think for me personally, that's generally how I'd like to see it. And that's also why I think reviewing the CUP once a year as a public hearing is so important. Because it gives everybody a chance to sort of rethink and make sure that we're on track.
We try very hard to be proactive with, with certainly anything that involves the town. Parking is obviously one of those issues. So we try to be proactive, we try to think creatively. We have an Uber account that we use for members when we need to. We promote walking the club, riding bikes to the club, all those things. And we'll continue to come up with those ideas. And we're open to ideas too. The best ideas come from other people. So we're, you know, we're willing to listen to other ideas as well.
Okay. And I would put the swim meet criterias in that same bucket, which is, I don't really feel the need to try to get into how many swim meets your league has. But, you know, if a year from now, the complaints we are getting is somehow magically there were six of these, then I think we'd have a different conversation. But I'm willing to trust that what you're saying is the likelihood of having more than two or three is virtually zero. And if it stays like that, then again, I don't think we need to be prescriptive.
That's good, yeah, that makes sense. And if we're doing the CUP review annually, we submitted our membership report in January, which is what I understand the tradition's been. So whenever we do the CUP review, you know, we're happy to be involved in that process.
So then the last one is this truck noise. And, you know, it's always hard to sort of sort some of this stuff out. But, but I can certainly, I'm very appreciative and also sympathetic to, if there's truck noises that were in my backyard before 8 o'clock, I would be pretty unhappy. And again, I guess I'm looking to you for the same thing. I mean, how can we get at this without necessarily, I mean, in theory, the 8 o'clock's already hard. And I don't know if we end up saying, well, if people report this. I mean, but, but again, I'm after that same thing. You know, how do we stop this so that, you know, he doesn't have idling trucks by his back fence? Just, it sounded like the original stuff was more about construction traffic. And this is more about just day-to-day delivery kind of traffic, if I understood the issue.
Sure. Phil and I, I thought we had a good relationship because Phil, I think it's happened three or four times this past summer, where trucks showed up before 8:00 a.m. Our staff tries to notify them that they gotta leave and come back after 8:00. If that doesn't happen, if we don't get to them in time, Phil's been very gracious. He sends me a photograph of the truck and we immediately contact that vendor and let them know about the 8 o'clock curfew. The problem we're running into is especially with hiring these days, we have new delivery drivers to almost every delivery for half the stuff we get. So a lot of these delivery drivers don't know where to go. They don't know the local rules. So we try to be diligent in keeping our vendors notified that we have an 8:00 a.m. time limit before anything can happen. And it's not a perfect process by any means. We are absolutely responsive to that.
Okay. Is there any kind of sign on the truck entrance that says no trucks before 8:00 a.m.?
There is, right at the Los Trancos entrance, there is a sign that states that. Yeah, getting them to read, that's another challenge, but
Yeah, yeah, no, I understand. I mean, so I'm, I'm sympathetic with your issue. On the other hand,
I understand Phil's concern, I completely
Yeah, exactly. And so
I wouldn't like it either, so I understand.
Yeah, because at the end of the day, you're a business and, you know, this is his house.
Right.
So, you know, I tend, yeah, no, and it sounds like you're trying. I guess what I would hope is that, you know, between now and the next time we review the CUP, that Phil feels like somehow we've gotten a handle on it. I mean, and whatever that is, but, but it does seem like, you know, because even having it happen four or five times in the summer, like that's, that's still an awful lot to have, you know, some loud truck in your backyard.
I don't disagree. And like I said, our challenge is each one of those has been a new driver. And they just simply don't know the rules or they don't care or they don't follow them. So we notify their dispatching center and reaffirm with them immediately the concern and the rules for the town.
And not that I'm trying to be prescriptive, but would it be possible to find the distributors for their, I mean, because I, you know, the best way to get somebody to pay attention is to get them to pay for
Yeah, and maybe that comes from the town. I don't know if that comes from us or comes from the town. So I'm open to that, to get them to pay attention to it, yeah. Like I said, I don't know how much authority we'd really have to do it. But if something were to come from the town, we're certainly happy to pass it along.
Okay, I mean, I guess what I'm trying to do again is being careful here. I don't want to interfere with your business and run in the club. And, but on the other hand, I think if Laura thinks it would be reasonable, I would be okay with the town generating something like that, you know, against the guys to say, look, the towns told me they're going to find. I mean, I guess we could find you and then you could tell them how unhappy you are. Seems a little backwards.
Yeah, 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 don't do that. But maybe if there's a letter or something that the town has, or Laura has, that we can pass along at our discretion, that's fine. We're happy to do that. You know, right now, our challenge with all these, any vendor we have is they're adding fees to us. So, okay, well, add a fee to them because we get fuel surcharges. We get, you know, labor expense surcharges. We get anything they can come up with to add an extra 20, 30, 50 bucks to the bill they're doing. Right, so.
Anne, I think Philip has his hand up and it's up to you whether to hear that out or not, but it may impinge on the conversation that you're having now.
Sounds good. I see both David Cardinal and Phil have their hands up. Let me take David Cardinal's comment first.
Thank you, Anne. Three quick things, one on the trucks. It is pretty clear from the signage that you need to go into lower area and you can't back up. And you have to be 72, it's a 72 feet turnaround. So, you know, God bless. I think the club has done whatever it can. On parking, the one thing I think we could do is make it more clear on big events, how to drive over the curb and get onto the bark and how to park in other areas. More importantly to me, to go back to the senior membership thing, not to harp on it too much, the idea was that the senior members are not assessed. They get a discount on dues. They don't have to pay for the $22 million club remodel. And the idea was by the time we got to 700 members, there would be 100 of them. And so now according to this, it would be 107 of them, I guess. I think there are way less. So I would like to see our club own up to over 100 real senior members for the people who, in many cases, they were the ones in 1960s who, you know, backed Sandy Mackey when he bought the club. And they're the people who've lived here forever and they've made our town and they got those 10 acres. And, you know, we're like pricing them out of the market. And I don't think we should be allowed as a club to add more members without paying homage and something to that. So I would like to see that incorporated, any increase in members to go back and honor what we agreed to 15 years ago when I asked for the 700 members. Thank you.
Thanks, David. Let's go on to Phil again.
Thank you. I'd practice. Thank you, I'm done.
So Dave, we still got you connected.
Sorry, just a second. There we go.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
I think I just said half my comment there. I thought I was open. But first of all, I think there was a misunderstanding in my original comment. My point wasn't that I had an adversarial relationship with Garth. It forces me to have an adversarial relationship with a club because there's no management of the trucks other than myself reporting it. The second point that I wanted to make is there, my issue's two-fold. The trucks show up before 8:00 a.m. and as Garth mentioned, they change drivers, they change people, they have different trucks show up. It's hard for him to manage that. It's almost impossible. But that's got to be able to have a way to manage it or we need a different area for trucks to deliver. The second problem that I have is the area that they allowed to have deliveries at is way too close to my house. Now, I know the gal who said she wasn't here when the original process was done. But the original process was done with three to four trucks and we were going to give it a try and we're going to see what was going to happen. There's notes in the process, I'm sure she can look up, that mentions that it's way too close to the house in the first place. But the noise level throughout the day has become eight to 10 trucks. And it's throughout the house all day long. And obviously, we're all working from home now, so I probably noticed it a lot more than when I wasn't around. But it's a twofold problem. Trucks show up before 8:00 is only one of the problems. The other problem is the delivery area is way too close to the house. Now, that is an excellent area to have extra parking in. As that turnaround is there, you can park cars there. But I think those trucks need to be moved to Alpine Road or to Los Trancos and the delivery guys can hand truck that stuff in. Thank you for allowing me to be here tonight. Have a great night.
Thank you, Phil.
So can I continue with my questions?
Yeah, go ahead, Craig.
Thank you. So Laura, this stuff is more into you now. What are, if we were to have these annual CUP reviews, what is the planning department's capacity for accepting, I'll call them complaints from the public so that when we get to a CUP, this isn't just self-reporting. It's like, yeah, we've kept track of this and over the last year, we've gotten, you know, four truck complaints or we've gotten 15 parking overflow issues. Because right now, it's really hard for me to figure out how to quantify this stuff. And again, I don't want to be too prescriptive on this, but I also want at the next review to be able to say, you know, either this stuff is a pretty small problem, I'm not going to worry about it, or, you know, this is, this is a pretty good-sized problem and it's not been dealt with. So what's our capacity in the town to collect the information so that when we do the CUP review, we have that information?
Okay, so let's kind of break up, I think it's logical to me, parking questions and then the delivery questions. So starting with the parking questions, I would say that my recommendation would be that the club periodically, on its busiest days, they know when those days are, do their own count with their own staff and go out and count cars. Include that in the reporting so that the planning commission would have a sense of how that's going. So similar to what the professionals do when they count cars, but you could just do it with your own, you know, entry-level staff. Just a few times on the busiest days, so the planning commission would have that data.
And when you say a busy day, you're not talking about special events, you're just talking
Not special events.
A day that just seems particularly busy, okay?
Yeah, so like busy days that are not special events. When they don't have designated people doing parking management and the members are just parking on their own. So I think that would be good information for the planning commission, which is not, you know, an extreme amount of cost or effort for the club to compile that data. In regards to the deliveries, this is, this is a challenging one from everything that we're hearing. We do not have the ability to find the delivery drivers. So we don't have any legal authority to do that. But it's, it is probably worth going back and thinking about what the assumptions were in 2017 and what the agreements were and just refresh those with the club and look back at the history. And then I think it is worth talking about whether any of those deliveries can happen in a different way. Like we have to look back at the traffic circulation, safety, you know, convenience, operational issues. Look at those things together. So that would be my recommendation, that the club take a look at those things and report back from their point of view in their next annual report to the planning commission if there's anything that they can do operationally. And then we would need our own traffic engineering folks to just take a look at that and weigh in and see if there's safety concerns related to any alterations that the club might make. I'm thinking about whether there could be at least a reduction in the number of larger trucks that are, you know, going into that area out or if there's some other way to control it. So I don't, I don't think that that's something that the planning commission can solve tonight, but I do think it would be interesting to have the club go back and reflect on that and see if there's any alternatives that might work to look at in the next annual report and report back on what did they investigate? What were their findings? What are their options? So the planning commission can hear that.
Okay, thank you. So
Oh, I'm sorry. There's one other thing. You wanted to know if we could keep track of complaints. And the answer to that is yes. If the planning commission would like us to do this, what we could do is use our PV Connect tool. So that's an app that we have and that's how we receive code enforcement complaints. And we could allow people to use the app to put complaints in there. And all we would do And all we would do is just say, we've received this. Do you know what I mean? And we'll, um, make this part of the planning commission record when they, um, do their annual review. So that would be the method that would be feasible for us to, to receive, um, complaints and be able to have data for you.
Okay, yeah, yeah, it sounded like PV connect. That, that's sort of what I had in mind. I didn't want to put a lot more burden on your staff. That's why I was asking. So, okay, um, yeah, I mean, I like the idea of having, you know, Garth's staff, you know, on a busy day, go out and look and, you know, maybe we can decide what the number, I mean, maybe three times a quarter or something, but just something to sort of say, yeah, this stuff seems kinda in line or yeah, you know, we see it starting. And I think that'd also give Garth the chance to get ahead of it. So by the time we had our annual review, he could say, yeah, I mean, we, we saw these things and we fixed them. Rather than we get to the annual and then we say, wow, this is really messed up. And then we feel the need to actually be more prescriptive. So, so that, that appeals to me. Um, the reviewing previous agreements, um, and reducing the trucks and maybe where it is relative to the fence feels to me like waiting a year is too long. I gotta say, if I were in Philip's shoes, I mean, you know, if this is a serious issue, um, so I guess I, I would maybe propose that we could still move ahead with the increase in membership, but that I'd like to have us, ha- have the club come back with a review of, you know, what was in that sort of original agreement and see if there's, you know, anything else we can do to mitigate for the, the kind of the truck traffic, timing, noise, et cetera. And then, you know, with, to Dave Cardinal's question about the senior stuff, I mean, I'm pretty sympathetic to that, but that does sort of feel to me like that's club business. So, um, I'm, I guess I'm not inclined to put that in the CUP, um, but I'd be open to what other commissioners think on that. I think that's it. Thank you, Anne.
Right. I had a question for Suzanne. Um, does the CUP specifically call out the deliveries not being before eight AM?
I, I will pull up the conditions and take a look. There must be something in there.
I mean, don't we have a general town ordinance that prohibits that without having it be in the, the club CUP? Laura, you might know the answer to that.
Our general ordinance is related to construction hours. Um, and so other than that, it, it would often be in the specific CUP.
Okay.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, that would be very common to have something in there.
Right. And I, I mean, I know two wrongs don't make a right, but I see tons of trucks super early, like six AM at, um, Alpine Inn. But there it's not such a problem because it's along Alpine, as Phil would say, so.
There is something in delivery schedule on point twelve in the CUP. They shall take place Monday to Friday between eight AM and five thirty PM. No weekend deliveries unless associated with a large event. If a week-long delivery is scheduled, it shall take place only at the front door of the clubhouse off Alpine Road.
We follow that too, by the way.
We follow that. So that's, that's already, yeah.
Possible. Yeah, we definitely follow that. Now, yes, there are times when it, something slips through, we absolutely follow that.
Yeah, I like the suggestion of the club monitors the large events, um, because I feel like we have disrupted, it seems like there's enough parking. Um, so I'd like to get to the bottom of this is yeah, on just regular, regular busy days, not the special events. Um, uh, how does it look? And then I would like to solve the delivery issue, especially the before eight AM one, um, I guess my only thought right now is that the CUP, when we have these annual reviews, we particularly look at parking and the delivery, um, situation. But I agree with Craig, a year uh, before that gets fixed does not feel good either. So.
Well, if they're, if they're gonna do an annual report in January, that's only
Oh. I see. The first one comes up soon. Okay, that feels good. Yeah.
Is that Laura, is that correct that they'll do it in January? Or is that still need to be determined?
Uh, it still needs to be finalized. Um, so their annual report, I think they, um, uh, on the kind of new schedule, they would turn something in in January. Um, it takes us usually, you know what I mean, three weeks to a month to get it scheduled for the planning commission. You know, sometimes it's gonna vary a little bit, but my goal is to have regularly scheduled CUP check-ins for our major, um, CUPs. So they'd be at the same time every year. That's our goal.
Right, I like that.
So we certainly could, it's, um, you know, given the normal planning commission schedule, there's no reason why we couldn't make this CUP review be in February um, of each year, like that's the normal time and it would only be changed if there's like a real reason not to. So if they can, um, submit their report in January, we could schedule it for February. So that would be the, um, that seems reasonable to me.
I like that.
And that timing works for you.
Garth, am I right? The, if we approve the increase in membership that the new members don't join till two thousand, till January or two thousand twenty-three?
Part of them.
Half.
Yeah, the way the CUP is written is we, we could take up to twenty-five this year and twenty-five next year. That doesn't mean we will though. Hey, because we're talking to membership committee, maybe we only do ten, ten a month. Starting, you know, in the spring.
I see.
So that.
Okay. The February timing anyhow for the CUP feels good to me.
And that's certainly reasonable for on our end as well.
But yeah, then I also want to leave the senior membership or some of the letters complained about the facilities and how many people were there. But for me, that's a club management issue, so I don't wanna get in on that or make it any condition from the town.
Thank you, Anne.
Um, my other recommendation would be to, um, update the language a little bit around the annual reports like we've done with some of our other CUPs. Um, um, related to the fact that there needs to be a fee that it's gonna be, you know what I mean, that it's gonna be reviewed because this has changed. And so we had a lot of CUPs in town that were never reviewed for many years. And so the community's interest and several of those CUPs have amended and become larger. And so the interest is to monitor them more closely. Um, but we want to make sure we have a system in place to do that if we're going to, um, you know, just review more of a, a report from them, provide a report to you, schedule it for the planning commission, those types of things.
And, and Laura, are you proposing that, uh, much like we've done with some of the other CUPs, that we sort of come up with a template of, you know, these are the things that we expect to see in the report?
Yeah, we could certainly do that. Um, that's, I think, productive for what we've done. Um, we've applied that to a priory and we'll have the same kind of thing for the Neely Winery. Um, that they'll know what to report and what the planning commission wants to see. So so we could do it a couple of ways. Um, we could have staff work with the planning commissioner to set that up or we could do the first one based on this, um, conversation if, if the planning commission, um, wants to approve the amendment. And then we could evaluate that in the next, at the February, um, review and then see if anything needs to change. So we could do it however the planning commission would like us to. Then you would have data that can be compared year to year.
Laura, the specific change you would make to the annual report prong of number three. Um, what would you change there? To me, it makes sense that instead of making the re- annual report review discretionary for at least the first year or two, it should be placed on the agenda so the public gets notice and we don't somehow lapse in this because there are a lot of changes and some regional concerns around parking in that area. I wouldn't wanna this to drop. So would it be possible to say there will be that annual report based on a template approved? You know, you fill in the blank by the planner, town planner or by the planning commission. And it will be agendized for the first two years and discretion, on a discretionary basis thereafter. What would you be recommending?
Um, I would recommend very similar language, um, to what you just said, that we do it probably for the first, um, two years, um, after approval. And then, um, I'm reading the language too. Because it's confusing right now, the way it's written, because it says it shall be provided to the planning commission.
Right.
And then if the planning commission determines necessary, right? So that's not really, um, a good modern language that we would use today. It's probably held over from old days.
Yeah.
Um, so I would say that the, um, report is provided annually to planning staff in a form um, set by the planning director. And the planning commission shall review, um, the report. And however many number of years you think is, excuse me, appropriate, the first two years. Um, the, you know, the first two years and then two years after. And then, you know, discretionary, if there's any complaints, um, after that. So that language, um, we have done something very similar for other CUPs recently. And so if the planning commission is agreeable to that, to the concepts that we're talking about. Oh, excuse me. Then we could go back, um, maybe in consultation, um, with the chair and just fine tune that language to be consistent with what we've done on some other ones. So the, I think the themes are, um, how many years in a row you want to see it right now? Um, whether you want, um, the planning commission to set the form or you want the staff to set the form. And then, um, if you want some other check-in in a set number of years, or if you want it to be only go back to the planning commission if there's issues after those first few years.
Do you want us to discuss and comment now?
Yeah, I think if you have consensus amongst yourselves of how you'd like that to be, then, um, that would be something that would be, I think, really straightforward for us to implement in the final condition of approval language.
So I'll just throw something out there. I would be fine if the form were set by the planning director since you would come up with that by comparing the CUP to the concerns and putting a checklist together. Um, we could have the planning director in consultation with one member of the planning commission if people wanted, but trying to keep it simple. Uh, the form could be there. I would say we should agendize it for the first, I would say, three years because you've got one year, the second year, people will be joining, the third year will be in a steady state. And after that, if, um, you know, either at our discretion or if there's a complaint, um, but I don't feel that strongly. So that's a strong man, um, for Craig and Anne to discuss or reject.
Great. Go ahead, Craig.
Um, yeah, so I'm comfortable with that. I agree on the three years because we sort of have just a quarter and then two years is really what it is. Um, and I, I would like to see something in the checklist that, you know, on the busiest days and it's just all, I mean, I'm comfortable with like, say, three times a quarter. I don't want to make this a huge burden. But I would like some kind of sampling that we could look at. Um, and then in particularly for this first one that's coming up in January, a review of sort of the past agreements, um, and you know, where these trucks are relative to the house and that kind of stuff. Because I, I think the, the first one that we review in January would be the time that we would get back to this issue of whether we're putting too much, um, impact on the local neighborhood. So, you know, and I think that's gonna be sort of special for the first one. I would assume after that you wouldn't see so much of that in the template because presumably we would, you know, we would resolve the, you know, what were the past agreements? It might be we'd have something that measured the trucks or something, but, but I think it's important for the first one that we actually go back and review the two thousand seventeen, two thousand eighteen agreement to really understand what was, what was there and what's, what's reasonable. And if necessary, potentially do deliveries a different way. I mean, if that's, you know, if we can't find another solution, um, but I don't feel like I'm ready to sort of prescribe that today.
Good. And I'm fine with all this with staff making a checklist. I like that. Doing free reviews starting February two thousand twenty-three and then at the planning commission's discretion after that, if we feel like we want to continue every year or we want to start stretching it out, longer reviews, that would be good by me.
Um, I have a question for Laura. Um, if we approve this, but then there there is a big old parking or truck issue. Let's take the truck issue in January and February. It's not going away. Um, addressing that wouldn't be part of this approval. It could be connected because there's a hundred and seventy-five more people using the club potentially, not all at once, but over the next two years. But what, what is our recourse? Because I, I remain quite concerned about this. I know there were diagrams about traffic flow at the time we first approved this. In theory, they should have worked. In practice, maybe they're working, maybe they're not. We need more data, but what is it that we would do if this remains a problem at the beginning of twenty twenty-three?
Legally, it is a challenging question. Right? And so, um, the way that I usually think about it is if there's something that clearly violates the conditions of approval, then that definitely, you know, has the authority to go back to planning commission. And then secondarily, the way I think about it is if there is something that violates the findings, um, then that's something that the planning commission can usually discuss. Um, and so we do have findings related to, um, circulation, um, and, you know, consistency with the neighborhood. And so those are the places, but I would, um, we don't have the town attorney this evening. Um, I would want to consult with her on exactly that. Um, on exactly that authority. So what we know is that, you know, the club is in existence for so long and the longstanding conditional use permits that they have the right to operate the club and that includes taking deliveries. So we're trying to find the best possible way to allow them to do something that they're legally entitled to do.
And for what this is worth, the board and the management team are gonna fully cooperate with mitigating this issue. And we, we want to be good neighbors, not just Phil, but Phil's the one we hear from, but the other neighbors, we want to be good neighbors to them as well. And we're gonna fully cooperate to make sure that this is addressed to everyone's satisfaction. And I know that's why worth, you know, the words I just spoke, so.
No, no, but it matters. I mean, we, we value the statement because you want to be a good neighbor. Um, the challenge is really that it took a lot of work to map out the traffic flow way back when.
Yep.
I don't think this is easy. I think it's important to fix. But I think, if I were you, I wouldn't wait until January and February. I would really look at that sooner rather than later and see if you can be creative in the interim and come to the table with, here's how we would prefer for, to mitigate. Um, you don't have to, life is busy, but, but if you
There's things we could do right now to, to push it up a level as well.
Yeah, because I, I have a lot of sympathy with Philip, but also the other neighbors. Um, the last thing I'll say in terms of discussion is to Dave Cardinal's point. You know, I think it is a club matter for what you do with the seniors. But, but it is important to us when people come before us, that they keep in mind it's important to be balanced on how you're treating the community. And the seniors that have been loyal members are a component of that. So to the extent, you know, that weighs in on how people view it and view, you know, the, the interaction with the community, it should be a factor, but it is a club matter, um, you know, at the end of the day for me.
Thank you for recognizing that. I appreciate it. And, and as I mentioned earlier, this has been discussed by the membership committee. The boards and management teams' first objective is to get to fifty approved. Because nothing matters if we can't get that approved. And then we'll go back and say, okay, we need to address these groups of members to make sure they're being properly taken care of. So that, that is, the club is well aware of that and we're making plans once we get past the next step to make sure that happens.
Anne, it's your protocol designation, but there's a couple of hands up. I don't, I'll leave it to you.
Okay. Uh, Craig, go ahead.
Yeah, so Laura, um, do you feel like if we had a meeting in February? Um, and it came back and to this point that it didn't feel like truck traffic was being mitigated. I mean. Independent of Garth's good, good effort, right? But but just for a moment. Do you feel like we have enough authority to change CUP to sort of get it enforced? Or do we need to do something now, like say, we approve twenty-five now and we'll approve twenty-five? Later, which, you know, obviously that doesn't help Garth as much because he'd just like to get this thing done and no complaint for it. But I, I also want to make sure if we get to February that we still have enough authority. To get this problem fixed if it's not being fixed. So, you know, what's, what's your opinion on that?
Okay, so I think you're asking about the planning commission's authority with the CUP amendment. Um, compared to a monitoring review. Right? Like what, what authority do you have in those different capacities?
Well, I want to be careful because the particular review. I feel like this review in February has kind of got two parts to it. It's got the standard, you know, whatever template we come up with, which is. You know, how much overflow parking was there and, you know, how many trucks showed up up after eight AM. So that's kind of the standard template. But there's this other question of reviewing kind of the prior agreements from two thousand seventeen, two thousand eighteen. To understand like, what was the intent? And is the intent being met? And is the turnaround and is, you know, where are the trucks bringing their loads? Is that appropriate? And that feels like. Kind of to me like a one-time thing, like I wouldn't expect to have to do that every year. But I also don't want to hold this thing up now. To get that information necessarily. So that's, that's what I guess I'm trying to balance.
Aren't they two separate issues?
They kind of feel like separate issues to me. Um. I was trying to move them both to a review period to give you a little bit of time and not just say. We're not going to, you know, we won't pass this resolution tonight until we. Have this other discussion. So I, I guess I'm trying to find a compromise here that lets you guys move ahead as a business. But that we also have a place where we're going to get some information. And, you know, to Philip and the neighbors, that it's not a year from now, that it's, you know, if it's in the next three or four months. That seems like a reasonable timeframe to make sure that this has gotten resolved. So, so yes, I'm, I'm trying to balance a number of things here.
Thank you.
Okay, so then I, I think what I would recommend is that you. Consider a condition of approval that outlines this first review. So you would be approving the um CUP amendment, but at the first. Annual, at the first review of the CUP amendment, let's say in the first quarter of twenty twenty-three. The planning commission would. Analyze, evaluate, we can think about that language, um, the. Delivery, um. Uh, the impacts of the deliveries, um, and. I have to think about the words, but um, like we could add that condition of approval that expressly says at this review, you're going to review that. And then that kind of puts everyone on notice, that sets an expectation for the neighbor and the applicant. And then preserves your legal authority to make um recommendations um and. Um, set reasonable requirements at that time.
Okay, yeah, I'm comfortable with that. Just, I just want to make sure that we still have. You know, some legal re speak. It doesn't. And, and I, I have every hope. Garth will. How to jump on this and solve it, but but if it doesn't, I still want to make sure the commission has some recourse. So that if, if you think that's. A workable model, um, I would trust that if you and the chair got together and figured out the. Precise wording to get to that, I think you've, you've got the intent that I'm after.
Yeah, I don't know. Um, Suzanne, have you done a condition like that? You've, you've done it here in the past in town a couple of times where there's designated things in the first review. That are considered.
Sorry, I haven't seen that before, but I, it certainly seems appropriate to include the um. Items that have been discussed and that there's concerns about and. Hope that some resolution can be. Uh, taking place between now and uh, you know, February or whatever, early twenty twenty-three. You know, and or. Regular reviews of some sort, that's very commonly done with these permits now, didn't used to be the case, but a lot of communities do that. We review it every year, we review it every three years or five years or whatever is determined to be appropriate, so. Um. Yeah, I think it's absolutely fine to uh pinpoint some areas, some target areas that are. Concerns right now that we're trying to see some improvements with.
So then I think, um, I think that would be an appropriate um condition to add. And the same thing, if we just make sure that we have agreement on those, um. If there's consensus on those points, then I think that would be sufficient um for us to be able to finalize the language.
Do we just want to try and re, do we want to try and restructure the current condition on the annual report? And versus to do another condition?
Yeah, I think we would make an amendment um do that condition for the annual report.
Right.
So we, we have the other, um. We have the other points. That I think there was consensus on so far, so we still need to capture that in a motion. Um, but then if there's consensus on this, that we would specifically identify. That first review, and I would be general, I would say the first quarter of twenty-three.
Right.
Um, would include. Um, and let me like, you know, I can try to come up with like the, the concepts. I think it would be. The planning commission would review the um. History of the uh deliveries and the circulation or the circulation related to the deliveries. Um, the intent of the past um approvals, so we could kind of go out in full minutes and remind you of what was approved in twenty seventeen. Um, receive comments from the neighbors. And receive um. A report from the club about what their proposals. What they've been working on, because we're assuming they're going to be working on it from now until then, what they've been doing to try to mitigate that. And then those things would come together um for the planning commission to review in February. So we would capture those concepts in um, in the condition of approval.
Right, so that's the main one, but then there would also be one where there was a little bit of parking survey work. Will that be lumped into this too? Yeah, okay, we already agreed on that.
Yeah, so would be other things we already agreed on, so this would be additive to the other thing that you, um, that you agreed on.
Yeah. I'm in favor of that. How about Judith and Craig? How about you all?
Yeah, I'm comfortable with that.
Okay, um, so just give me a second to think, because I'm, it's only nine, but I'm already a little bit tired. So we're going to do the. Like the history of the circulation approval, um, the intent. Then we'll get um feedback from neighbors. And then we'll have the club's narrative. On what they have been, um, what they've been trying to do, what they think is working and what they're willing um to do for the future.
Mm-hmm, good.
So we would, depending on the construction of the condition, then um. We would either add that as a subpart of the condition related to the annual report or add it as a separate condition. That says that it's the first um annual report in the first quarter of twenty twenty-three. Then um these things will be analyzed and evaluated.
Yeah, I don't have an opinion which way it's done.
So then, um. I've got notes and I can repeat any of those things back, um, that I think that we have the consensus on. Um, if you're moving the direction of emotion, I just don't know if you're there yet.
So I guess my last question for Garth is. What are we looking at going forward? Um, you know, you've increased quite a lot. You're pretty much at the maximum parking uh that, that you built in the new renovation. Um. Are you going to be back here in a year and a half or two years?
I sure hope not. It all between you and me, I sure, I don't think we will be at all, but there's. There's nothing that's. We're not in a position to make any, take on any big construction projects. Um, we're not in a position space-wise to add anything to the club. Uh, so no, there's, we're not going to be back. This is not going to be a, you're not going to get to know me beyond this process right now. Is the goal.
You're saying you won't be the manager next year?
Well, yeah, you, you never know. If I have my way, I will be, but. That's a good point. If I mess this up, maybe. We're, we're looking to get past the pandemic. Because really, this is the first year we've been able to operate in the clubhouse. Uh, so we're looking to get past the pandemic. A- and just. Establish. You know, who we are in the new facility. And be a vital part of the community. That's a good question, that, Jada. Thank you.
Great, so uh, we ready for a motion? I. Could be ready for that.
Yeah, yeah, um, I'd like to just make sure that we all um have agreement, just. Repeat back the things that I think we agreed on in terms of the main annual report. Um. Condition. And that, that would be um agendized for the planning commission for three years in twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five. And then after that, it would be at the discretion of the planning commission, so the planning commission could call it up. So in real life, what that would mean is if I was getting complaint or staff was getting complaints, then we would um recommend that it go to the planning commission. Or if you, the planning commissioners hear something, the chair could request um for it to be agendized. So that was the, we're going to add that. Then we're going to add um that the club itself would do some parking counts.
Yep.
Um, on busy days that are not special event or swim meet days. And I heard three times per quarter. Then um we need to have those first three reviews, the formal reviews, and they submit a fee for those. So that takes care of the um, the annual report. Um, normally. The only thing that I wanted to make clear is those um parking counts that are three times per quarter. Did you want that to be? For kind of always and ever, or for the first three years, or for the first three years, and then it's discretion of the planning commission? Do you have any opinion about that?
I think I'm comfortable with the first three years. I think, you know, unless they come back to ask for more, more members, presumably it should stabilize by then. The other thing I would add is we talked about PV connect. And having the reports feedback into this report.
Okay, got it. So that would be the main um condition for a, for um annual reports. And then for the first report in twenty twenty-three. The things that I mentioned, kind of the history of the site circulation, the intent at the time of the approval. Uh, the feedback from the neighbors and the club narrative about what they've been working on. Oh, go ahead.
I, I was going to ask Christian Dujie's, I mean, what, what do you think about getting a? I, I don't want to get in the clubs' membership business, but, but to your point of the seniors are part of this community. Um, at least getting a breakdown. Mm-hmm, so I'm not, I don't want to be prescriptive about how many they have, but just get, get the breakdown. So we could just sort of get a general sense for. Whether it feels like it's sort of moving in the right direction.
That information's included in the membership reports that we submit each year anyways, I believe. It wasn't this, it wasn't this, it wasn't this past year. I'm not sure about previous years. Um, but this, for twenty twenty-two, when we submitted in January, that information was included.
Okay, perfect, yeah, because that, that, that way I think that that would answer. Dave's question, and I think in general, we could just sort of see that we're getting a good balance.
Yeah, a- and we do that for the priory, right? Because we want to know that there's a. Majority or, or a substantial portion of usage. By the community, this is an element of that. So if it's, it sounds like you're prepared to do it and willing to do that. So I would include that in the report.
So um if the planning commission um wishes you could make a motion to adopt the resolution. Um, with the elements in the staff report plus um the amendment to the condition that we've discussed. Um, subject to um the final wording being drafted by staff and approved by the chair.
I would make that motion.
I. Um. Technical issue on attachment A, there's a blank. Can we approve it with the blank or do you need to fill in the blank? In number six.
You're on red page sixty-four.
I can't tell at the moment, my, my, my iPad's stuck, but um it's on attachment A. Conformance and plans and use, I think you. You just left a blank for a date. And I, I just want to make sure we're.
Yeah, it's fine. We would just fill in the date, that's.
Okay, that's fine then. So yes, I'll.
Okay, great. Any further discussion by the commission? We'll take a roll call vote, I think.
Yes.
Commissioner Haskell?
Hi.
Commissioner Taylor?
Hi.
Chair Koffsel?
Hi.
Okay, great. So then process-wise, um, Garth, what you can expect is that there's a ten-day appeal period. Um, for this approval. And then the um approval becomes finalized, and so we staff will work on the final. Drafting the final language of that condition that we just talked about, and then we'll review it with the chair. And then we'll issue the final conditional use permit um with signatures.
Does this need to go to the town council?
No.
Excellent, okay.
So this is the final action, unless there's an appeal.
And did you want it to go to the council?
No, correct, I was going to ask you, Craig. Yeah, I hear you giggling back there, so. No, I, I just wasn't aware of the process, that every town's a little bit different, so. But I, I appreciate your chuckles, thank you.
Well, thank, thank you for your patience, you know, we, we are supportive.
That this group and this commission has been very supportive of the club, so we recognize that and we appreciate it, and thank you very much.
Great, okay, um, let's see, our next topic is commission reports, so. Craig, do you have anything to report on?
I do not.
Elizabeth and I are going to jump off.
Oh, yeah, you're welcome to stay, but you're welcome to jump off.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, everyone. Good night.
Night.
Thank you. Uh, let's see, Judith, do you have any commission reports?
No.
Okay, then, and neither do I. So we'll go on to staff reports.
Um, just a couple of things, um. You know that our senior planner, Adrian, is out on maternity leave, so. We're um working on the schedule for her to be back. We expect her to be back part-time. The end of October and full-time back in November, um, so we're very excited about that and looking forward to it. You're all aware that the housing element is currently with the state um for their review. We are expecting um to, if they keep with their process that they've been doing for others, to have a phone call with them. Right around October tenth or that week. Where we can get a preview um of the issues or the comments that we'll get from them formally. And then once we've had that phone call, we're going to reconvene the ad hoc housing element committee. To continue conversation of the housing element and to make some revisions to that. And then from the planning commission, we are working on a very intensive schedule. That I am apologizing for in advance. It's going to be a lot for us, um, for the planning commission. And for staff to bring forward, so we're working on the details, but you can expect to see. Um, draft language for zoning code amendments that would go with the housing element. And then you can expect to see a meeting that will include the environmental document. Uh, again, for the housing element and, and for the safety element, oh, actually. So that will be like you have done for other environmental documents, where it's a public hearing, where the public has a chance to give comments. And you have a chance to ask her questions and give comments. And then you'll be seeing um kind of the whole package of the housing element. The zoning and the sequoia document coming to you, and then after your review, then it will go on to the town council. So it's a.
Roughly, when do you, is this a November timeframe, December timeframe, January? What's the idea?
Um, most likely coming before the planning commission in December.
Okay. Thank you.
And the.
And the, the sequoia document. How is that focused? Like, uh, like, how do I think about that? Is it all, both of those elements together? Is it those? Is it cumulative? Is it like? Cause I'm used to it being for a site, right? And I, I kinda get how that works. I don't know. Do they look at the impact on the whole town? What, what should we be prepared to see? Like.
Um, great question. We, what we'll try to do is write a little, um, how this is different and what you can expect. So this is called, it's a program. Um, environmental document as opposed to a project environmental document. And so it takes more of a bird's eye view. It takes a larger perspect- perspective. Um, it does look accumulative. It looks at, um, all of the environmental categories from a larger view instead of the drilled down, very specific view. But it will have detailed, um, traffic analysis. It will have, um, well, fire analysis. It'll have, you know, the kind of those, those big categories, but at a higher level instead of more specific. And then when individual projects come in that implement that, each individual project is considered. And, um, that program environmental document provides some environmental coverage, but not necessarily the whole thing. So you still might have to do a project level environmental, um, analysis of each of the projects. So then that becomes a case by case analysis. So since we haven't looked at one of these, gosh, I don't know if the town has barely ever done something like this. Um, so we'll try to give you a good introduction about how to think about it, how it's different, you know, where to focus, kind of what the framework is.
And, and unlike the wedge where the applicant bore the fees and pick the consultant. We pay, we pick. Is that how it works?
So for the wedge, the applicant pays, the town picks. So the, the, yeah. The consultant were, um, still reports to us, not to the applicant. For this one.
Your question was the sequoia for the housing element, right?
Yeah. But she's comparing, comparing to Sanford.
Yeah.
Go ahead.
The introduction was unnecessary. I just wanted to know who pays and who picks. That's all.
The town pays, the town picks. So we chose that consultant, um, uh, probably fourteen months ago, sixteen months ago, um, when we originally started the housing element work.
Wow. Okay. And, and are they the same people, like?
Yeah, well, same, the same lead firm.
Okay.
Yeah. The same lead firm that's helping us with our housing element, Urban Planning Partners, has, also has environmental people and environmental sub consultants. So there's a lot of, um, time savings and financial savings to have the same people working on the different pieces for us.
Okay.
So what I'll be doing is, um, I'm, so I'm working on this schedule right now. I know it sounds a little crazy, but I'm planning the town's planning commission calendar, um, through till the end of the year and early into twenty twenty-two because there's so much going on. So I'll be in communication with you, planning commissioners about that schedule. Make sure we can get a quorum for those meetings. Um, and then we'll be releasing that schedule, um, for the public. Of course, some things are gonna be subject to change, but we want people to know what the target dates are and when to engage and what to expect. So, um, those are my reports. Um, oh, the other thing is that we've been authorized by the town council to add another technician to the planning and building department. And so we're in a recruitment process right now. And I'm optimistic, um, that we'll bring another technician on board. So that will help us, um, with the workload that we have right now. A, a full-time, um, town employee.
Great. Thanks. Um, let's see, and we take public comments now, right, on the staff reports? Sorry?
Yes, please.
Yeah, great. So if anybody from the public would like to speak, uh, go ahead and raise your hand. I see David Cardinal's hands up.
Hi, at the risk of burning in hell forever, um, the, I wanna point out that the Alpine Hills CUP and membership is not a matter just for the members. I spent many hours in front of our town council, um, arguing for the senior memberships as part of what it would take to make, uh, our membership grow from six hundred to seven hundred. And, um, that was a, that was important, that made that possible. And I think it's important that we do that and blowing it aside, as important as parking is, um, our town culture is important. And I would love to see somebody actually audit Alpine Hills for keeping up with the hundred senior members they were supposed to honor and keep. And now I guess a hundred and seven with a seven percent increase. So that's my short story, which I apologize for bringing up now and apologize to Laura, does a great job. Thank you.
Thanks, Dave. Uh, let's see, Caroline Vertonghen?
Good evening. Um, yes, I was wondering if we can have an update on when the CUP for the Neely project and, um, if we will, uh, when those are scheduled? And then also I was wondering if Laura could give us an update on where we stand with the ADUs and junior ADUs. Everybody in town wanted to promote that, um, many committee chairs, uh, as well. So if we can have an update, that would be great. Thank you.
That's all the public comments that I see.
Want me to give a brief update on those two things?
Yeah, thanks, Laura. Appreciate it.
Um, for the Neely Winery, um, they are, um, finalizing the plan check. So they're working through some technical issues related to the physical building itself, um, in the building code. Um, the ASCC member that did the review was Megan Coke, and she has completed that review and and signed off on the smaller items related to the sign, the gate, the driveway, kind of final location and orientation and, um, preservation of the oak tree. So that step has occurred. So the planning and zoning review is essentially complete and they are finalizing, um, building code related items. So they are not approved to do that physical, small bit of physical change that they need to do, but I would say that they're quite close, um, to being able to do that. And then they would go into operation, um, and all the conditions that the planning commission placed on them. Related to ADUs, um, there is an item on the next council agenda on the fourteenth, one week from tonight. Um, and so folks should tune into that. Uh, council member, uh, or Vice Mayor Wernikoff has a colleague's memo to the other town council members with a proposal called for something called the ADU ambassador program. Um, so that packet will be coming out on Friday. So you can read more about that. And that would be a good place to engage with the council, um, about the next steps related to ADUs.
Great. Thanks, Laura. That's good. Um, okay, I think we're on to our last big topic, which is approval of minutes. And we've got four meetings to approve. Uh, three of them are in the abbreviated format and one is in the, um, uh, verbatim format, so it's quite long. Um, so I guess let's just go through these one at a time by date. The first one is June fifteenth.
And I, I'm a little confused. If I could ask for clarification. The verbatim minutes, I didn't think they were anything more than informational. Um, because there are inaccuracies in them, but if we start correcting them, then we're acting as if somebody reviewed them for quality. So maybe Laura, if you can help me understand what, what it is we're supposed to be doing on the verbatim minutes, um, the others are so short. You know, I don't know that I'm ever gonna have a comment on them.
Okay, thank you. That's a good point. Um, I wasn't thinking about it that way. Um, in light of that, my recommendation would be we should, um, prepare the abbreviated minutes for formal approval and keep the verbatim minutes for information only. And mark them as such, like put them into the record, but keep them only as informational.
Yeah, I, I like them as informational. They, they are laborious and they do have a bunch of places where they're inaccurate. But if they're consistently inaccurate, I've, I felt that was probably what we should leave alone, right? So.
I didn't follow. Why should we leave inaccuracies apreciated?
If you're ever trying to correct something to make it perfect and you, you kind of never succeed. I, I, I found them extremely difficult to read. I mean, it was better than the abbreviated ones where there's no information. But I, I would not want them to be considered a, you know, approved factual document, but more of just informational. I mean, I think they're helpful, but they're, i- if you read them carefully, I mean, they don't, I, at least some of the stuff I read, I, I couldn't even parse the sentences. And I don't think we talk that poorly when we have our meetings.
And sometimes they say inaudible, whereas the old minutes were prepared with somebody going back and trying to listen and trying to get it right, it seems. I don't know what actually happened behind the doors. Um, and, and so, and, you know, I think we just have to have a rule and abide by it. But for this one, I had not looked at them in enough detail because I, I think my impression was the official minutes are gonna be abbreviated. I disagree with that for the record, but if that's what the town council has decided, then we should abide by that rule and not do one of each, right? You either have the minutes be, you know, more comprehensive or you have the high level. I think the high level is wrong, the wrong approach, but let's be consistent and play by the rule that is set.
Yeah, thank you. Um, I agree when you explain it that way. Um, so then our recommendation would be for the planning commission to only consider the action minutes. And then we would bring back to you action minutes for the meeting that had the verbatim.
That's good.
Good. Let me see. And when I did look over those long minutes, um, you know, I found places where it said it was Commissioner Targ speaking for many pages, but really it was Commissioner Taylor. Mm-hmm. We're just gonna leave it like that or I should send that to somebody?
Well, it's just for information, so I think we should leave it that way.
Okay, thanks.
I think it was Commissioner Tarkus. He went on for quite a while during.
But you know why I noticed at the end of that long thing, I said, thank you, Craig. And I'm like, wow, I thanked the wrong person, but I didn't.
Well, there was Nicholas and then there was me anyway. Yeah, I, I think if I, I'm, I'm on board with separating them out. And then we can approve them next time if that's possible.
Okay. Okay, so we should still go through them one at a time, right? I mean, there's not much to go through, but let's work on June fifteenth, right the moment.
So I have a conundrum here. I didn't keep personal minutes on who all the participants that spoke were. The way I would get there is the verbatim minutes, but I didn't do that. So Laura, maybe offline, you could ask Cara what we were actually supposed to be approving in these high level minutes. Because to me, it's a rubber stamp. And if that's the understanding, so be it. Um, but if you're actually asking me to confirm that these are the exact public members that spoke at those meetings, I don't have my notes and that would be the only way I would be able to confirm that. So I, I, you know, I, I will go along with the plan to approve them now, but in the future I want a rule about what I'm supposed to do to fulfill my duty as a planning commissioner to confirm these minutes are accurate. Cause I, I can't tell you if, you know, Mary Huffty followed or went in front of, you know, Christie Corley and, and that's the only information in here. So it seems pretty important, but I, I don't have my notes. So I'll stop there. You, you got my point. I would like advice.
Okay, got it.
Okay.
Got it. And, um, I think I recognize and respect that this transition for the planning commission is a challenging transition. And please be assured that we've had numerous conversations about it, um, at the staff level. And on the projects, on the days where the planning commission is approving projects, that's where the action minutes are more logical because there's a motion and a second and, do you know what I mean? And, and approval. Or an adoption of a resolution to approve something. When you're just receiving something and hearing comments, there's not much to this style of minutes.
Yeah, yeah.
Um, but your, your, your comments are well received and will, um, get you more information.
Thank you.
Craig, I presume you have nothing on the June fifteenth minutes?
Not much there.
Are you sure you agree with this sentence down here?
Yeah, you mean about the adjournment?
Um, Laura, I should take public comments on each set of minutes by themselves, right? Or we should go through all three and then take public comments on all of them?
I would go through all of them and take public comments on all of them. There, that, since we're not gonna prove the transcript, they're all pretty short. Everyone should be able to manage that.
Okay, good. Okay, so that was June fifteenth. Um, anything for Judith or Craig on the June twenty-third?
No.
Okay, and then we're not gonna do anything with June twenty-ninth. We gotta jump way ahead to just a sec. It's gonna take me a while to run, run to the end. Um, whoops. Oh, you guys, I lost it. Now I'm in the long set. Um, what's the next set of minutes to approve?
July twentieth?
Twentieth.
Okay, good. All right, July twentieth. Thanks. Any comments?
No.
Okay, so I'll open it up to public comments on all three of those sets of minutes. Uh, first up is Dave Cardinal.
Give me a second, please. Oh.
Sorry, uh, what, what did you say, Laura?
That's, that's my bad. Uh, no, no hand up.
No hand up. Okay.
Oh, oh, sorry. Okay, thanks, Dave. Uh, next is Rita.
Hi, thank you for taking my comment. Um, the meeting minutes from June are almost three months ago. And I'm sure it would be hard to remember who spoke and who did this and who did that. And, um, I am not sure how you could comfortably approve these minutes. And looking at the other, um, draft minutes, um, perhaps someone can just go through them and, um, and make those corrections. I'm not gonna go through the, you know, what's, uh, needs to be corrected here. But somebody just needs to, uh, read, read through them before they're then approved. Um, and those are, you know, almost two months, one month away from when those meetings also happened. Uh, so if someone could go through, I'm not sure what help you have to read through those and have it just come back to the next meeting. So at least the residents would be able to see these draft minutes at this point to see what had possibly gone on in those previous meetings. But, um, we're, we could do better than this. Thank you.
Thanks, Rita. Okay, um, I presume no more discussion by the commissioners on the minutes. Uh, I guess can we have a motion to approve these abbreviated ones?
Um, I was a little confused by the last speaker's request.
Yeah, me too.
So what, what is it that we were going to be asked to go back and review? Um, I'm not sure. Um, the lengthy minutes? No, I don't think so. The, the short minutes.
Yeah, Rita, go ahead. Um, I was confused too. We had just decided that we were.
Yeah.
Abbreviated one.
There was, there was a lot of discussion in these, um, meetings, a lot of things that really affect the residents of this town. And, uh, you know, the comments are, are very abbreviated and, and, and very light and they don't reflect. Um, maybe somebody needs to go. Um, maybe somebody needs to go look at the video and, and then uh, fill in to, to make it just a little bit more robust. It doesn't have to be word for word, but um, you know, this looks like the back of someone's napkin and not the passion of the residents in this town that uh, were concerned about these particular issues. Uh, and, you know, like on one of them, on for August third, there was, under oral committee occasions, there was a, the letter U. And yes, that's correct. It's like, w- we, we could do better than that. You know, I look at the warrant list, uh, you know, we could do better than this. That's, that's what I'm saying. You know, it, it should be a little bit more robust, because these decisions that happen in these meetings uh, affect our lives, affect, you know, what time trucks are parking outside of our back door, affect what our neighbors are building right outside of our house, what our property values. Uh, you know, I, I'm just saying that it, this needs to be re-reviewed and not just three months, two months, one month away, and just passing it just for convenience sake. I, I, I take this very serious, and I know that, you know, you guys wouldn't be here at nine thirty-three on a Wednesday night if you didn't. Thank you.
Yeah, thanks Rita. I think we're, um, the town has moved by um, people on the council to have the, these, just these action minutes, because the um, you know, Zoom things are available to people that wanna go listen and hear all the comments. Um, as Judith said, she didn't agree with it, but um, you know, that's the decision by people that are elected. Uh, so we were gonna go with the plan on these three sets of meetings minutes for now.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Good. So any more discussion among Craig, Judith, and me? I kind of presume not, but leave that open.
So we're talking about the June fifteenth, June twenty-third, and July twentieth, right?
That's right.
So I, I move that we approve those three sets of minutes.
I'll second.
Good. And I guess we'll do a roll call vote, Laura. Is that right?
Yes. Commissioner Hasko?
Hi.
Commissioner Taylor?
Hi.
And Chair Kofstel?
Hi.
And, and I would agree with the speaker. I think we're still, you know, this, trying to get these minutes right still feels like a work in progress that we have not quite achieved the goal, so um,
Right.
We, we can work with the council and we can kind of work through this stuff. Um, so I mean, the verbatim's better than having to go back and look at a, a video, so that, that's, that is an improvement, but it's not, I don't know. It still seems like a step away from the minutes we used to have, which were a little more condensed, so we weren't reading pages and pages of uh, the basically blah, blah, blah. So, so anyway, yeah, I, I'm, I'm on board with, let's, let's keep trying to make better, better minutes, because they are the, the record of what we've done and what, what the residents are thinking at this time and place.
Yeah, I, so um, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Yeah, I, I still don't understand why we did this. So, you know, since I'm not comfortable, if there is an answer, you know, we should put it out on the table and, and talk about it. Um, but I don't get it. So, you know, I, I hope to hear more and that we can figure out a way.
And Laura, do we have to do the same thing as the town council? Can we make our own rules and advisement on minutes?
Um, not on this particular topic. So the council adopted this um, for the council and the commissions. Um, so on this topic, the, the planning commission doesn't have authority, but um, I'm, I'm hearing what you're saying. I understand. And let me go back and um, coordinate with Jeremy on the appropriate way for you to transmit your interests um, to the council. So I will um, all work on that part and let you know the, the appropriate way to communicate um, your, your concerns.
Great, thanks. And I see John Richard-
I hear you too, and I understand. Yeah, that's, it's um, it's a problem, I can understand.
Yeah.
Thanks for the enlightenment.
Yeah.
Thank you, John.
Yeah, no, the, uh, it, it was good to have the um, two versions here, this super short start point, and then the one that was the transcript of the five and a half hour meeting. You're like, okay, somewhere in the middle, there's some space here to do something-
Hopefully, we'll get to a place where there's a better automatic trans- transcription possible. Make that less golden.
John, are you able to shed any light on why we did this?
You know, it was, it was a lot of discussion quite a while ago. I'm,
Okay.
It's, it's more, it was mostly to the point that it's, it's, that the way we've been doing it for all, for all these years is rather unusual. And uh, most communities do not do uh, verbatim minutes the way we have. Um, so that was, I think it's an attempt to sort of come into the, into the modern era for the town. Um, but obviously, there's some drawbacks that way for everyone.
Yeah, well, when there's an appropriate mechanism for me to communicate, I will do that. I would, I'll wait for Laura to tell me how, um, because we're not every other community, and if this is what distinguishes us, it's not a bad thing to distinguish us. So I'm ready. Let me know how it went.
I will, I will let the commission know um, the right way to go forward, so um,
Thank you.
It's on the list for sure.
All right, thank you, Laura.
Okay. Um, and then just um, what, let's see, Laura, do you know if we're having a meeting in two weeks?
Um, I don't know for sure.
Right.
Um, I'm still working on a couple of scheduling-related things. Um, so, um, yeah, I'm not sure yet.
Okay. We'll save ourselves for all the work in uh, November and December.
Yeah, it's, it's really a lot upcoming, but I'm gonna try to lay it out for you as best as we can, so we can move um, through it, you know, efficiently, so that, that's really the goal.
That's fine. So, you ready for a motion?
Oh, yeah, that's right, yes.
I, I move that we adjourn.
I'll second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Great, thank you, Laura.
Thanks, everyone.
Okay.
Thanks, everyone. Good night.
Good night.